Welcome back to another edition of the Sal Greco Show. This is a on the road edition with Sal Greco. I am still out here in Tampa. I am still giving a helping hand to the residents of Tampa, who are still trying to pick up the pieces from Hurricane Milton. Obviously, this wasn't as bad as Hurricane Helene was and how Hurricane Helene hit Asheville and other areas and completely devastated those areas. And I also was in Asheville. And we're still here helping out. If anybody still cares or feels inclined to support the helping efforts and the efforts of trying to help these residents in Asheville or Tampa, find the good charity organization that you feel is worthy of your donations and of your support and feel free by all means to donate or, you know, either maybe you even want to come down here. I believe my friend Mighty Fuzz, he came to North Carolina. He was helping them out in person. So this is a collective effort. It takes everybody. It's not just one person. So feel free and just know that they are getting their, you know, lives back together here. Not everything was destroyed, you know, but it's still a hurricane's a hurricane, natural disaster is a natural disaster. And then, of course, we have things going on in the news like the continued disastrous mess that Eric Adams has left New York City in. He's basically a lame duck mayor. We have an officer in the 75th precinct by the New York City Police Department arrested on trying to lure a 14-year-old girl to wherever it is or whatever it is he was trying to do with them. Very sickening things. We have social media policies that the New York City Police Department violated under New York City Chief of Patrol John Shell and the Deputy Commissioner of Operations Kaz Daudry. And City Council wants to basically make a law that violates everybody's First Amendment, but there are already policies on the books that says you can't do certain things on social media if you're an official for the government or the city government, yet nobody seems to enforce anything. So I'm actually honored because I'm going to bring on a guest once again on this show. You may all know him from the Finest Unfiltered Podcast. His name is Eric Dim and I'd like to welcome Eric onto the Sal Greco Show. So as promised, on the Sal Greco Show, I'm bringing back a guest that he somehow has made it to be the most viewed show that I've had on YouTube and Rumble and most downloaded on Apple, Spotify and all these other podcasting platforms. So without any further ado, he's the co-host of The Finest Unfiltered, my good friend and retired NYPD Lieutenant Eric Dim. Welcome, Eric.
As always, thanks for having me, brother. Yeah, I mean, the episode's doing really great. We're talking about Casa Fritos, quite a few of an array of topics, but that was the main focus. What's up, dude? Tell us your story today because normally, you know, normally it's me that I'm kind of like the, I'm the wild card, you know, with the RV life and I'm recording sometimes in the car or outside, but today you're the one recording from the car. What's up?
Yeah, so you know, I'm out here in Tampa, you know, for the whole month, short of the 36 hours that I had at home. I've been on this hurricane relief between Hurricane Helene, it started in Asheville and now Hurricane Milton that hit Tampa. So I've been all over the place and I'm not able to produce any shows. I'm not able to really do much other than try to keep up with the news cycle. And that's one of the things, that's why I wanted to bring you on because first you covered a lot of things in the last week, but then in the last couple of days, we've seen that we had an incident in the 75th precinct. You had an NYPD youth officer, I think his name is De Souza, he was arrested by Internal Affairs. And I don't know, you want to get into that story a little bit because I broke this story, but then somehow the Daily News refused to even mention that. I even brought, you know, I even mentioned this on X. So tell the audience what happened there, Eric.
Sure. That's actually near and dear to me, right? Because I actually volunteered a lot of my time with that program as a special operations lieutenant PSA seven, which is Public Service Area, Police Service Area seven in the South Bronx and Police Service Area four in the Lower East Side. I volunteered a lot of my time as a crime sergeant there too. I just love kids. So actually, as a lieutenant, I ran a boxing program. I taught the kids boxing. I did a self-defense situational awareness program, mentoring program, teaching the basics of law enforcement. And it's no surprise to me, I have to be honest, I'm surprised this doesn't happen more often. Thank God it doesn't because there's absolutely, absolutely zero leadership. There's no direct supervision with this program. And honestly, I blame the commanding officers because they really don't care about this program at all until it's ComStat or it's time to take Twitter pictures and photos, but they really don't care. That's the problem.
I think you're right, Eric. And you know, I find it funny, this individual was doing the youth, you know, he was in this youth officer position for quite a while. I went back and found a picture of him in 2020. And that's troubling because if he was a youth officer then and you're hearing about him being arrested and attempting to coerce a 14-year-old, because the actual story that I understand, I don't know if it's on the actual complaint, was that there was an incident at a church where he was either alone or something occurred with a younger female. The church then called Internal Affairs and handed over a video of this individual who was in the room by himself with her for about a few minutes. So then they set up this thing where you heard in like the article had said that they had an undercover officer, I guess, contact the youth officer and De Souza and then he spoke to her or Snapchatted her or something. And then he sent this picture of himself, which, you know, I don't even want to mention because it's just disgusting to say this. So that's what they arrested him on. But clearly there was other incident, there was another incident prior to this that really did occur. And I'm worried about incidents that may have occurred in the past. Now, you know, because you're a lieutenant, you were sergeant, you were supervisor, you're involved in this program. Do you find this, is this an institutional problem? Or would you say, is it, you know, a failure by the commanding officer or the supervisors here? Because this seems to, under Eric Adams, I'm hearing a lot of different things going on. And this is a troubling thing that happened on a Friday night, let alone that they announced that, you know, they went in and scooped this guy up.
So I think it's always been a problem. I think it's always been a problem. It's always been a lack of leadership and direction when it comes to this actual program. I think the program is great, but I don't think there's any supervision. There is, you know, some issues. So John and I on New York's Finest Unfiltered Podcast, we actually were just discussing it and some great points that we brought up. One in particular, John was saying that this program should be scrapped altogether because especially with the crime spree right now, cops really don't have the time to really dedicate to this program. So I agree. I think it should be all or none. This could be a program that is administered and monitored by retired guys who really want to take pride in. It's a great program because it's kids from 13 to 20 years old, get kids off the street, they learn the basics of law enforcement. Some of these kids come from broken homes. They get a real insight. I mean, I still keep in contact with some of these kids. Some of these kids have went up to college, the military, some of them have become cops themselves. But you need the right people in there and you need direct supervision. So I blame the entire police department, especially the upper management, the leadership, because there's no actual direction. No one cares about this program until it comes ComStat and it becomes an issue. It becomes a question about community and police engagement. That's the only time they care or they care about Twitter pictures. Because I've seen commanders, even the ones I like, completely slight this program. I don't even think they know who's assigned to the program. I don't even think they know any of the kids' names. So the fact that this particular officer has been in charge of this program for four years leads me to believe that there were signs and there were things happening that people either saw and overlooked, or just completely exactly what I've been saying, is that there's no leadership to make sure. Because I wasn't assigned to it. I volunteered my time and I took it upon myself to take charge because I wanted to protect those kids and help them. So I saw plenty of times, I saw cops give some of those girls googly eyes. Some of those girls were 18 years old, they were up to 20 years old, and they're built like women. And I would tell the cops, get away from my kids and I would protect them. And that's what we need. We need strong men and women on this job that police each other.
Yeah, I agree with you, Eric. And I don't know exactly who supervises these officers exactly, because I know back when I worked in Coney Island in the six, so we had a youth officer that wasn't a pedophile, but the supervision, I believe, fell under the special operations lieutenant who really didn't, you know, okay, great job, because the special operations lieutenant, which that's what you did, you're worried about crime. So how can you supervise a youth officer when you're worried about the actual criminals running around in a precinct? You have to put that most wanted list, who's recently arrested. So I think this program, you're right, it only has to be scrapped, but like, what? Do you blame any of this on the commanding officer or the executive officer of the 75th precinct for just letting this go? Is there any kind of supervision here, short of the special operations lieutenant who really has to have his mind on his teams, which I guess what? They're, I don't know, they call them SRT or whatever they're going to call them in a precinct. They wear the khaki pants. I guess that's the SOL where he's in charge of now. But in our day, the SOL is in charge of crime and conditions. How is that SOL going to be in charge of a youth officer where he's got to worry about 90 other things and this thing is way out in left field and not really concerned? Because it should be a DV officer or something. No, there's a DV sergeant, domestic violence sergeant. Who's in charge of youth? Why isn't that guy in charge of youth? You know, I'm just saying, it's a, I think it makes sense. I mean, what do you think?
I think it's an epic fail on the upper management of the police department. It's the chiefs on this job that are responsible because this program is not designed where it has specific leadership or specific supervision. I blame the commanding officer of the 75th precinct because there's no actual supervision to make sure that a cop is properly vetted, that is assigned to that unit, and there's no supervision to watch and supervise that cop and to monitor, make sure it's running effectively and appropriately, especially we're talking about, we're dealing with children who range from 13 to teenagers to adults because it's 13 to 20 years old. So we have a raid, an array of kids. And it's not just girls we have to watch out, it's for boys. We have to protect them. I mean, we talk about trust. We have parents that send their children with the police department. If anyone you want to trust is the police department. And this is an epic fail because there's absolutely no leadership. I blame the commanding officers. Most of these commanding officers don't even know who's assigned. They don't even know who their NYPD explorer is. It's usually a cop that doesn't want to be there or an empty suit. I was lucky in PSA seven, I had the best female cop that was assigned to the unit. In PSA four, I had an awesome cop who was a former Marine who cared about these kids. But in most precincts, it's the cop who really doesn't care. It's the cop that doesn't want to do anything who they assign to that unit. And honestly, the commanders, they have no idea who these kids are. They couldn't care less until it's an issue at ComStat or it comes up as a Twitter photo. And that's the problem. There's no actual supervision. I took it upon myself because I took pride into it. But as a special operations lieutenant, you cannot have actual direct supervision. Needs to be a sergeant specifically assigned to that unit. The NYPD Explorer program is actually overseen by the NYPD Explorer Headquarters, which is at One Police Plaza. So it's not direct supervision. It's an epic fail by the entire police department. It needs a complete overhaul. If this program is going to continue, and hopefully this never happens again, they need to change and have direct leadership. And I wouldn't be surprised that they'll do it now as a knee jerk reaction or scrap it altogether. But unfortunately, if they scrap this, it's the kids that suffer because it's a great program for them to get insight about the police department.
You're right, Eric. I'm a hundred percent agreeing with you. And I think this program either got, has to be revamped or completely wiped off the face of the planet because we can't be having, you know, this kind of stuff. Because I am, I am, I'm always one on the job that they always had a line and said, we have to protect our young. This was a complete fail. You had a predator on the loose and I'd be worried about if there's any other pending cases or stories that have happened in the last few years since this officer, De Souza, who was in as a youth officer from at least 2020, from what I saw. This is a disgrace. I hope they get this right. They should throw the book at this officer. We cannot be having this. We have all these other problems in New York City and in the NYPD. We don't need pedophiles running around in uniform. And I've seen an occurrence lately too, where every few months you hear about another pedophile officer. So enough, enough with that. Now, I did hear you say, you mentioned the chiefs yet again. So there was another thing that happened in the last few days. And I saw that a city councilwoman wants to put in a bill that virtually steps on everyone's First Amendment rights. I jumped on this only because the reason for this, Eric, is obviously, we could go back in time and you have the chief of patrol, the current NYPD chief of patrol, John Shell, and his right-hand man, the deputy commissioner of operations, Kaz Daudry. Somehow he's a detective that's a commissioner and that's a whole nother story. But that gentleman, these two gentlemen have been browbeating and threatening people online. It started with you and John McCary and it exploded into city council people, other journalists, regular, I mean, they were threatening regular people. Talia Jane, who I guess not too many people are a fan of hers. I believe they were threatening her and I was actually Chief Madry, Jeffrey Badry, the chief of department that did that. So this rule, I believe, is supposed to effectively say, you're not allowed to post on social media via a government account. You can have a fake account, but it's almost impeding on your First Amendment right. So I don't know what you think about this because there's already laws and rules on the books through the New York City Charter and a social media policy, which I posted on my own X, on my own feed in regards of New York City government employees. So what is your take on that entire incident? Because you were actually victim, I don't want to say a victim, but John Shell personally picked on you and John McCary. So as Kaz Daudry, they're out of control. What do you have to say about that whole incident?
So I think there's already a social media policy in place by the NYPD, but what do we know? And you're the perfect example, Sal Greco. You were roughly terminated by the police department for criminal association, which is a complete hypocrisy that we see exposed by the police department. So you're the case in point. You're the prime example. And we see the analogy here and we see what's unparalleled is that we have a social media policy, but the social media policy is only applied to general population of the police department. I'm talking about police officers that don't have a tie to nepotism, but the upper management, the high-ranking members of the police department are not held to this policy. And they've acted completely unprofessional on social media. They've embarrassed themselves. They embarrassed the patch. They've embarrassed the most iconic police department. And now they've allowed these wackos from the city council to come up with this idea to have this proposal because they were so embarrassing, because they were so unprofessional. So I blame them for the city council actually coming up with this actual proposal because this proposal is anti-American, violates the Constitution, just like every other proposal that has been enacted and actually passed by the legislation of the New York City Council. So this is completely anti-American, but I blame John Shell and Kaz Daudry, who are the upper management of the police department, who've acted so unprofessional that it's gotten to this point. So I do blame them. But again, this is an attack on First Amendment speech. What they did was, what they should be focusing on is not the verbiage of what John Shell and Kaz Daudry did, but on their actions. Because the actual verbiage is First Amendment, it's unprofessional, but their actions of targeting and trying to control the narrative and trying to target John and myself and First Amendment speech and you, yourself and other journalists, even if they're leftist and anti-police, that's an act of terror and that's anti-American also.
Eric, I agree with you, but there's always a side caveat from Sal Greco. So you're right, they are trampling on the First Amendment right. But what they should do is actually Conflict of Interest Board and other agencies, the Department of Investigation should have actually John Shell and Kaz Daudry, if they're not terminated because they're involved in a federal investigation, they should be terminated for threatening people online and violating their own social media policy and the social media policy of the city. See, the law's already on the books. And when they had a city council meeting and they had a whole committee asking them questions, which by the way, that was the one time I saw council member Youssef Salam, we'll get to him in a little bit, actually show up to do his job and he's asking questions. But in this meeting, in this council meeting, and I believe your podcast, Eric, you and John covered this on the Retired Filter Podcast, you saw that they asked them about social media and they didn't even have an answer other than to say, we have 270-plus social media accounts. Well, who's monitoring that? There was no answer. There was crickets. 270 social media accounts. So that's 270 versions of the same thing. You are representing the New York City Police Department, which is a government agency. It's a New York City government. It's a city government agency. You only need one account giving you traffic conditions, road conditions, another account, most wanted, this person did this, here's the, and then you could have an account that's not official, showing you all these feel-good stories. Hopefully, no pictures of Officer De Souza hanging out with young cops or young explorers. And that account shows you the good side of the police department that's unofficial, as far as official government accounts goes. Explain, how is it that John Shell on his @NYPDChiefofPatrol account can sit there and browbeat city council people, even though we may or may not agree with them? How is that okay? And how is it okay for a city councilman to do, and city councilwoman to do the same thing and they violate their own rules? Because who's paying for those posts? The taxpayer. Does that benefit the taxpayer having people put their personal issues on a government account? What do you think about that, Eric?
Well, I think the pissy matches that are initiated by John Shell on social media is absolutely embarrassing. It's unprofessional. I think that when you're in a position of authority, especially the police department, you should remain stoic. So we have far too many mouthpieces at the police department. There should be one, if any, maybe two, very minimal accounts that are authorized and representative of the police department and utilized for social media. Social media is a powerful tool. We use it. And it should be a tool utilized by the police department in this era, but not meant for pissy matches. And that's what we see. It seems completely unprofessional. We see that the social media policy is violated, but what are we lacking? We do not have structure in the police department anymore. There's no clear vision of who's actually running the police department. And that failure is under the behest of Eric Adams. Eric Adams is the one who also endorsed and emboldened this behavior by saying that he likes John Shell's style while he was attacked by the city council for his, his childlike behavior with these pissy matches attacking journalists, including myself, right? So Eric Adams, who is the leader in charge of this administration, has emboldened and empowered John Shell to have this type of behavior. Also, what do we also have is we don't have the rest of the upper echelon of the police department to have moral principle. No one is standing up and saying, hey, I'm a fellow chief and I do not condone this behavior, that this is not the representation of the police department we expect. And I am in opposition and I polarize this actual behavior. No. So no one's saying a word. John Shell has been pretty much given the path to have this type of behavior when no one has corrected it. And it's an epic fail on Eric Adams and this entire administration, especially with Eric Adams himself.
I think that's a great analogy, Eric. I wholeheartedly agree. I also motion that I do believe that Kaz Daudry and John Shell should be reprimanded, if not terminated for their actions. Any city council member that does it, they should also be under investigation because it's a city rule by the New York City Charter, have a whole social media policy. It's so unprofessional to have a chief going at it personally when the government account, which is paid by taxpayers, as well as the council member account, is also paid by taxpayers. No personal grudges. We just want to hear about public safety issues, traffic conditions. If there's any crime going on, that's it. That's it. Or use your personal account. I'm against this law, whatever it is from the council, the council member that put it up for grabs and said that we need to shut down the councils. I don't believe in that. Everyone has a First Amendment right, but not under a government account, an official government account, because then it looks like you're making an official statement for the city council or the New York City Police Department. So that's as much as I'll say about, you know, all of that. I do agree with you with the caveat. Now, you did mention the police commissioner. Tom Donlin is the police commissioner. Somehow we found out that this guy, I thought he was going to step down. We know that they raided his homes. I got a tip and I put it out there that I understand that they allegedly also took his phone. They've virtually taken every person's phone from the upper echelon right now. It sounds that way, it looks that way. Anyone who's, you know, of any relevance in the New York City Police Department. I thought he was stepping down. I guess Jessica Tisch, who is the sanitation commissioner, was going to take the job. Eric, what the hell just happened and what's going on?
So I think that Tom Donlin is, well, he's now the most insignificant police commissioner we've ever seen. Before, it was Ed Caban, who's the former commissioner. But Tom Donlin is now the most insignificant. But what he's also, he's a complete simp. Because all he's doing, he's been put up to go on the podium to acknowledge Sheriff Miranda and say how great he is and talk about how great Eric Adams is because he's not running operations. The actual operational police commissioner is Kaz Daudry. Tom Donlin is there. He's just a face. I believe Tish Jim, Tish James, excuse me. I believe that Jessica Tisch was actually going to be appointed, but I think that she got advised by her family not to take that position, which was smart, especially under this Eric Adams administration. So I believe that Tom Donlin is there right now just as a face. I believe that Kaz Daudry's actually the police commissioner of operations. And I believe at some point, once they find someone else to be the next insignificant face, they'll put that person in place. So I believe Tom Donlin is there for a very short time and it's short term and it will be short-lived.
That's, I like your points. I'd just like to point out that it also, it's a bit unconfirmed, but I believe Tom Donlin put out that this is through the grapevine in New York City Police Department that he wants to put Tariq Shepard, the deputy commissioner of information, public information, as his chief of staff. So apparently, there's big talk behind the scenes about this. So I don't know if this is the first you've heard about this, Eric. Somebody, we're not going to say who, but I'm getting information about this. So, and it's not the now RIP X account, Town Topics 2024, the AKA Eric Adams Crime Family. We bid adieu to you, whoever you were. No, it was not Sal Greco. I know there's plenty of people out there that want to make that assumption, but farewell to that account. But there is this rumor and these alleged, allegedly, Tariq Shepard is to become the chief of staff to Tom Donlin, who we believe is a temporary fix. What do you have to say about that, Eric?
First, I'm hearing it right now, but no surprise to me also because Tariq Shepard is close to the king. So I believe these are strings that are actually pulled by Eric Adams. Again, I think Tom Donlin is there just as a face and just to, just to regurgitate whatever he's told to as the lapdog for Eric Adams. I don't believe that anything he's doing right now is a decision made on himself. I think we're bamboozled in the beginning to believe that Tom Donlin was going to be there to clean house, but it turns out, he's part of the house that needs to be cleaned. So his phone was also raided. So again, I think this, this is another Eric Adams appointment. I wouldn't be surprised if that's the case. So just more nepotism by Eric Adams and a failure of this administration.
Yeah. I heard that and I said, you know, I'm going to ask Eric or John about that because that was the first I heard about it. But actually, Tariq Shepard, you know, Eric, this guy's another guy that was online and he was browbeating reporters and he still browbeats reporters. And if you, if everyone does recall, when the whole Columbia University thing happened, he was the first to say, there were no incidents that occurred, but they forgot to mention that there was a, you know, a shooting, even though, I mean, a sergeant let off a round, which is a pretty big deal. But he said there was no incidents until there was. He's also, you know, he sounds to me more like a political operative. Wouldn't you say that, Eric?
Absolutely. It's the entire administration under Eric Adams has been, the focus and the theme is fight perception, change the truth, control the narrative and gaslight the public. And Tariq Shepard is that mouthpiece. He's the deputy commissioner of public information, along with Bull Look and News, who's the deputy commissioner of public information for NYPD, giving out false information, lying to the public and omitting information is just as much as lying. And they admitted the information, admitted the fact that a sergeant had an accidental discharge during an operation of trying to evacuate that particular location, which was Columbia University. That's an epic fail. That's an epic fail that they lied to the public and an omission is a lie when it comes to transparency, especially the age of transparency that we're in right now. How ironic.
You know what else is ironic, Eric? In the same DCPI unit, right underneath Tariq Shepard, who has an 80-person staff, which is outrageous, that people are hiding, they're hiding full-duty cops in this. Okay. And one of those cops decided to Okay, and one of those cops decided to shoot at somebody, left him as a quadriplegic out in New Jersey, go home and then go to work in the morning like nothing ever happened. So when you hear the Deputy Commissioner of Public Information or you hear this office of spokespeople, remember what we're telling you. Number one, they didn't tell you about an accidental discharge while gloating about them putting up a flag on, on a raid inside of Columbia University, which was just, it was comical to see that. And then one of their own, someone very close, who by the way, I believe got their position through nepotism, through someone they knew or this officer knew to get into DCPI with two and a half years on. They decided to go and leave someone in an attempted murder in New Jersey as a quadriplegic. And now he's, he's facing charges, but he forgot to mention that when he went back to work the next morning. So this is a mess. So this leads into the biggest question of all, Eric. I predicted a few weeks back, I thought Eric Adams was done inside of two weeks, only because legally, uh, even, you know, administratively, how does he continue to govern the city as the mayor when we have positions that are open right now that nobody wants? They have, up there is plenty of job openings in the city. Nobody is taking, no one's even applying for it. We have positions like police commissioner, temporary, fire commissioners being, you know, they, they, they're rapidly changing. Everything in his administration is not what it seems. Nobody wants these jobs. The city is not surviving. It's thriving, he says, but yet we see the opposite. Crime is through the roof. He's worried about perception. He goes to his press conferences now. He's there by himself. How does he continue to govern the city in all the, amidst the chaos, people resigning? How is this being done and he doesn't step down? Why hasn't Kathy Hochul said enough is enough? Why isn't that committee gone for a vote to say, we need him out of here? I don't want to hear about Jomani Williams because New York City voted for him. I'm sorry. You never thought about it when you were voting for public advocate, but he's your next mayor, apparently, if, if Eric Adams steps down. But Eric, how do you see the whole situation? Because I don't know how New York City is functioning right now with this mayor.
So I think that Kathy Hochul will not remove him. That's my prediction. I think that she is intimidated by the potential race card. Because if she does remove Eric Adams, that will be Eric Adams playbook. And we know it because that's what he's done before in many, uh, particular topics. So I do think that Kathy Hochul, it, for her, I don't think it makes a difference. Right now, we just discussed this before between myself and John. And John had pointed out that Kathy Hochul, actually, right now as we speak, has over a fifty percent approval rating. So, and that's what Eric Adams still in place. So the fact that she has over a fifty percent approval rating with Eric Adams in place leads me to believe that she's not going to remove him, that it's gonna be upon Eric Adams if he's going to resign. And he's made it clear that he's going to reign, which is pretty much be a king or a monarch. So I don't think he's going anywhere. I think he's going to survive till January first, at least at this point.
So then the city's not surviving, it's thriving, just like he says. He's gonna, he's gonna survive and, and thrive all the way corruptly by a man. Just, just the other day, Eric, I read that-
I guess it's whatever your version of thriving is.
Yeah, because, you know, uh, uh, just the other day, Eric, I read that his brother, who has this fundraiser, was advertising him on the fundraiser to show up on a Thursday night, which he was also, Eric Adams was supposed to go to that, the, uh, the out, that, that dinner with the Catholic, the Catholic dinner that Eric, that Donald Trump was at, so President Trump, so. He was supposed to go to that, but he never said this. So Bernard Adams, his brother, has this fundraiser for that 501(c)(3) he has, and he advertises Eric on it and then people paid for this, yet at the last minute via WhatsApp, they tell everyone who paid the ticket. By the way, there is nothing tonight because Eric wasn't gonna show up. So again, this sounds like this guy won't stop with the criminality. The mayor can't be doing that, let alone, we understand that there was a straw donor to his legal defense just a week ago. Some person in Miami that when they were called said, I never gave a donation, Eric Adams. That's a straw donor. He's, that's what they're talking about him doing all the time. So Eric, I mean, when, I think the reason Kathy Hochul hasn't termi, like terminated his, uh, mayorship yet is because that would mean her arch nemesis, Letitia James, and Andrew Cuomo would jump into the mayoral race with their eyes on the governorship a year later. I think it's political. Do you think they're playing politics with this when they shouldn't, when you know that there's, Eric Adams, by, I mean, in all honesty, he's a criminal and they're keeping a criminal in place? What do you have to say about that? Do you think there's anything to that?
I think you nailed it. I think you hit the mark. I think that's another contributing factor. I think the first factor is that with the potential race card, I think the second factor is that, that Andrew Cuomo is pretty much a shoo-in to get the seat. I, I don't think Tish James is a shoo-in. I do hear some grumblings that possibly she would run for mayor. But from what I hear, excuse me, it, it appears Andrew Cuomo would be a shoo-in by both parties, by the Democratic and the Republican Party for New York City. So I think that is another obstacle. I think you're right. I think it's a two-part, uh, it's, it's a two-part component here, which one I think is the potential race card. And I do think you're right. It comes to politics and Andrew Cuomo. I think you're absolutely right. I think you nailed the mark when it comes to that.
That, that is, that is quite, uh, quite alarming, uh, you know, that that's happening. And now I'm, we're gonna go full circle. Because the last time I had you on was probably the beginnings of the Sal Greco Show exposing a place known as, now it's shuttered. Conso Frito, that was in the Bronx, in the industrial section, owned by the former police commissioner's brother, Richard Caban, and allegedly co, I mean, managed by a mob associate and self-admitted criminal, Jimmy Rodriguez, which, uh, you're very familiar with. You worked in the Bronx. He's the former owner of Jimmy's Bronx Cafe, where Major League Baseball banned their own players from being there because, uh, there was nothing but, uh, you know, criminal acts going on outside, inside, unsolved murders. And, uh, you know, he, they were a part of the, the Hall of Felons, known as Conso Frito, where, you know, anything went. They had no, the liquor license, somehow they kept it when the, they had a party shed that was ordered shut down by the Billings Department under Eric Ulrich, another guy who's now knows Jimmy. He's posting about him. You have the, uh, the, uh, Fire Department said there was a fire trap. They gave him twenty violations. It was another happy land waiting to happen. Then we have the, uh, Board of Health, the, uh, the Health Department there. They went there and gave him violations for having mice droppings, rat droppings in the food. So anyone that ate there might have gotten sick. Yet they kept an A rating and the party went on and everybody in the major player in the city was there. They all wanna say hashtag, I know Jimmy, and they were chummy-chummy with the police department. And now you heard about this whole scandal with extortions going on. The other brother, James Caban, Jimmy, the twin brother of Eddie Caban, who is well-versed at Conso Frito with Richard, his other brother. What do you make about the entire mishegas of the scandal and the events that occurred in and around Conso Frito, especially with the police department? And now he has a new place called Sobro Gardens, where it looks like Jimmy's at it again.
So for one, I think you should be reinstated to the police department. You should be vindicated and you should be compensated. John and I spoke about this before on a prior podcast, I think it was yesterday or two days ago. Where we spoke about criminal association and we both agree, we no longer wanna hear criminal association as a policy for the New York City Police Department or actually referring to someone as lacking character in the police department. We did an interview of a former sergeant. His name is Stephen Lee. Stephen Lee did an undercover operation with the police department. He was terminated by the police department. And we're hearing grumblings and different scuttlebutt about Stephen Lee. And we had an interview when some people saying, oh, Stephen Lee was a piece of garbage and that he associated with criminals. And John and I both said, stop right there. We don't wanna hear about criminal association anymore. Stop using that as a policy to characterize bad cops. When you have the upper echelon of the police department, you have Eric Adams with his administration, all the way up to Tish James, associated with known felons, known criminals at Conso Fritos and other restaurants, especially particularly around Jimmy Rodriguez. That's the focal point at Conso Fritos. And that is complete hypocrisy. So that, I would say, is the most important thing to focus on is the hypocrisy. Especially Internal Affairs Bureau themselves had a Christmas party at Conso Fritos. And now we all know that when it comes to Christmas parties, especially if you're in Internal Affairs, where people get special assignment promotion, where they get detective, that's pretty much a mandatory appearance. No one is missing that Christmas party. So I don't wanna hear criminal association at all. Both John and I both said it. We don't wanna hear that charge anymore. Absolutely need a complete overhaul. That should be removed from the police department. If not, every chief right now, everyone that's taking part at Conso Fritos should be terminated, just as you were, Sal Greco, because other than that, then you should be reinstated, compensated and vindicated.
Thank you, Eric, for the kind words. Uh, I never wanna make it really about myself. It's very hypocritical. But I, I'm pointing out, I mean, I, I, I saw too, where many people jumped on Stephen Lee. Say what you want. I think he has a right to tell his story too. I, I saw a lot of negative things. And, you know, cops can be brutal. You know, I know that, retired or not. Uh, we try to keep it fair and honest. Uh, my point though is that this place, which also had the, uh, human trafficking unit, uh, got a criminal referral out of this place. This, this place has had every allegation known to man. And yet they were alleged to have been availing because we all think, we are looking at this as Jimmy Rodriguez is the true owner, yet on paper he's not. But again, now he's doing the same thing again in this other place. I mean, who's helping this guy? Is it a cop? Is there, is there, uh, 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 you know, someone in the state? The, the State Liquor Authority? Because Conso Frito is still facing a hearing in regards to the court order they violated. That's Richard Caban. Wouldn't the State Liquor Authority or the NYPD say, you can't just get a liquor license when your last place you were involved in has an issue? Now you have another place in what, which is Open Sesame? I mean, who's not doing their job here or who's helping this guy? Because I am stunned that his name hasn't come up at all, anything, since the entire upper echelon is insulated around him and in his place. Eric, if you look at the lines of how this is all going, Conso Frito would be in the middle and then from there, all the tentacles grow. Especially with this nightclub extortion racket you heard. I mean, that deputy mayor nightlife, Jeff Garcia. He's picturing with Jimmy. He's another Conso Frito guy. When is it? I mean, it's just everybody you look at, oh, they've been there. They know him there. I mean, if you're a cop, Eric, and you just walk in this place, you don't know anything. You have a meal. I hope he didn't get sick, but I, I'm talk, I'm not talking about that person, but the people that were constantly there. I, I mean, how is it that Jimmy, has anybody looked at this guy, said, how does he know all these cops when he's got a criminal? You know, he's a self-admitted criminal and a mob associate. How is this okay? Well, you're worried about Stephen Lee, but we're not thinking about all these executives that were hobnobbing over there. I mean, this is ridiculous. And, and the fact that the, every place, I mean, Conso Frito was alleged to have been availing, which technically they should be because this guy says he's the manager, but he's really, I mean, he's there every day. And Richard Caban was the owner and now he's doing it again with another guy in another place. Yet they're still answering for the Conso Frito stuff. How is this, Eric? Tell me. Someone try to explain this to me.
So when it comes to the police department, I always say it's a three, it's a three-tiered system and not even a two-tiered system, right? We have general population, those that wear uniform that don't have a tie to nepotism, right? Those are actual police officers, rank and file. Then you have those that are khaki pants that get separate amenities and other people in the uniforms. Then we have the upper echelon of the police department that have this nepotism because of the rank and the connections that they have in the job. And it's all hypocrisy at Conso Fritos and the relations that they have there. And there's rules for some and not, and not rules for others. And the rules don't apply to them. While they have the gall to actually terminate you, while they actually do far worse than the relationship you have with Roger Stone, who was pardoned, may I add, who does not have a criminal record in comparison to Jimmy Rodriguez. Now, you made a good point. I think that Jimmy Rodriguez does have someone inside on the state level to actually get all these State Liquor Authority licenses for people that he puts in place as the paper puppets, as the owners when he has these places. It's been his MO for many years. If you look at Jimmy Rodriguez, he's been part of numerous restaurants that have came up and went down and had someone holding the State Liquor Authority license while he was actually the manager and owner. And again, we see this pattern in this cycle, but yet he obviously has some ties. He's had ties to high prolific, uh, politicians for many, many years, which included the borough president of the Bronx, uh, Ruben Diaz, includes Tish James, Eric Adams. And we see it, members of the police department, and they're all falling in line and they're violating their own policy. So again, it's a policy that should be removed from the police department. Absolutely. Sal, I, I, I just think it's complete hypocrisy and I think that the police department has further embarrassed, embarrassed themselves by violating their own policy. It's just, again, it's no surprise with the police department. It's no surprise with these politicians. I think that we see the corruption level that stems through that, not just only the city, but throughout the entire state. And Conso Fritos is at the center of it.
Yeah, Eric, it's, it's quite disturbing. I get a, a lot of people, there's a ton of, uh, comments and I, I get a lot of emails. They, they're all asking about what the hell is going on up there. They see the pictures. They see these politicians. They see Tish James. How is Tish James not sanctioned yet? You know, you're the Attorney General. You have the power to make somebody a criminal and yet she's hanging out with one. I don't, and it's like all the time. And you got Carl Hasty, the public, uh, you see, he's the speaker of the, uh, uh, of the, of the assembly. He's had a, a doubt, how many fundraisers did he have there? And then we heard from NYSfocus.com how the Democrat Party of the Bronx, four hundred thousand dollars just disappeared. They never, uh, mentioned this on any campaign finance forms and then all of a sudden they amended four years later. So then we have Jeff Colton and I went back and forth on a post where he showed that there was one Conso Frito party, it was three thousand dollars or something. And I pointed just four, four, four times that they were there and there's no record of it. There's a lot more. So there's more to this story and it will be continued on a later date. I just find it surprising that Jimmy Rodriguez's name has not come up in anything when they're all insulating him basically, because it's all of them there. He's in the middle. How are they all getting around all these laws and rules that they're breaking, yet there's no action? None. I don't know if the feds are there. I don't know what they're doing, but that's to be continued. But there's one last thing I was gonna touch up on here. I know recently you saw Yusef Salam. He's one of the Exonerated Five from the Central Park incident years ago. He was elected as a city councilman for Harlem. Of course, he, you know, spewed out the same kind of rhetoric that Eric Adams does, that he's gonna change this and do that. First thing he got involved in, he had tinted windows on his car with Georgia plates. A police officer pulled him over. He was looking to have this man fired and whatnot. But that's not the case here, what I'm talking about. The problem with Yusef Salam is his constituents almost eleven months later after he was elected are complaining. They complain that Yusef Salam is nowhere to be found, Eric. He's, uh, quite busy traveling the country and the, and the state, uh, speaking. He has plenty of speaking engagements. So I put a whole big post out where I showed you all his speaking engagements. So Errol Lewis, a very distinguished journalist in, in himself, in his own right, who I highly respect, put down the rules. He put out the rules of the city charter that stated that you cannot have speaking engagements unless you get permission from the Conflict of Interest Board. So many people started commenting, the pro Yusef Salam people that wanna start with the whole making it about race, which is outrageous, crime has no race. They wanna say that, uh, we're picking on him and there's nothing there, that they approved everything. But yet, Eric, we have no proof of this. Because I then reposted later on, the, the following hours or a day later, four instances of him having speaking engagements that were all over the country. A New York City Councilman going to Nebraska really doesn't make sense to anyone. Who's paying for those flights? The organizations that pay for these things, do they have business in front of the city? Also, how much money is he being paid for these speaking engagements? Because that would be a problem also with city council, who only make about one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars tops. Remember, Yusef Salam, who claims he has a, uh, a doctor, he's a doctor, has an honorary doctor, but we don't even know what college he graduated from. I mean, there's no record of anything. He hasn't announced that he got graduated from college anywhere or has a doctor, doctorate in anything or an undergraduate. But he advertises himself as that, Eric, and it seems that he's using his office to enrich himself, kinda like Philip Banks has, how, uh, uh, Timothy Pearson, that thug, that former aide of Eric Adams, he, he's done the same thing. But yet Yusef Salam is doing speaking engagements- We don't know if he's getting approval from the, the Confucius Interest Board. I find that very hard to believe when he's done so many, that it was so many that I found that I couldn't post them all. And then I get attacked obviously by lobbyists because he's a, on the committee board. He's on many of the committees that are very important to the city. Land use, uh, so on and so forth, about five or four of them. And he's the head of one of a public safety, which is he even there? Because the next thing I'm questioning is what's his attendance at city council? And how many times has he voted or has he even put a bill out? Now we saw one last thing before I let you speak, Eric, because this is important. He is now suing Donald Trump for defamation. Yet we don't know what his role is at city council because he's hardly ever there. He's all over the country. He also went to go see Donald Trump apparently in a green room somewhere, which is on the lawsuits. That means he wasn't working. When does this gentleman work for the people that elected him? Forget about his past. I'm talking about right now and the last 11 months. He was elected to do a job. The citizens and taxpayers and residents of Harlem want to know why their representative is nowhere to be found. They knock on the door, there's nobody there. We don't know where he is, other than we see him speaking all over the country. What is your take on this? Since uh, I don't think, I don't think you or John have covered this yet.
Sure. I think uh, from what I hear and what I've seen from him when he speaks at the city council, I think he's pretty much an empty suit. But what is it also reflect? It reflects, it looks like he's trying to go out on a potential political run. It looks like he's utilizing his office so that he can go on a political run while simultaneously making, making a substantial amount of money from these private speeches that he does. It's definitely a direct conflict. It's definitely uh, an issue. Confucius Interest Board should be looking at it right away. But from my appearance, he's a complete empty suit. It looks like he's, he's making some type of political run. He's using and utilizing the story, how he was uh, exonerated from the Central Park Five to put him in the spotlight, also using that so he doesn't have to actually be a suit that's actually working, serving the public. I see, I think he's utilizing it to serve him, to serve his own needs for a potential political run somewhere in the future. And again, I'm, I'm glad that people are holding him accountable. And I heard the same thing. People say, oh, you're picking on Yusef Salam. No, we should be picking on him. We should be monitoring him. He's a public service. They should be holding him accountable to make sure taxpayer money is actually being properly allocated and he's actually serving the public, which appears to me he is not.
I agree with you, Eric. I think it's quite alarming when I have constituents from Harlem telling me Thursday to Sundays, Yusef is in Georgia. So we already have four out of seven days that we could say he's not in his office. Uh, that is troubling because you have an empty suit. And this, I mean, he got elected to do a job. He's being paid to do a job. But he seems to be enamored with making money other ways. Because remember, Yusef Salam already had a lot of money coming in. He made money. He was already doing all of this. I don't think his heart is actually in being in public service or representing the people of Harlem because he had his life. He was doing public speaking. My personal opinion, I think that he just doesn't want the job. He just doesn't know how to say, uh, this isn't for me. Because he's never there, Eric, and I don't know any other city councilman that would do that. Even the worst of the worst, you could say that people don't like, they're in their office. You could find them. You cannot find Yusef Salam. His own constituents are saying that. And uh, I find that troubling, Eric. So what are your last thoughts about all this?
So I can't say what he's thinking, but I can see what I, what I see and what I observe. And what I see is I believe that he's uh, not necessarily wanted the job. He doesn't want to do the work, but he wants the resume. Right? This is part of his resume. It builds his status along with his private speeches. I think that his intentions, based on my observations, is to make a further political run. Maybe somewhere in Congress or something like that, which is why he's doing these speeches and show that he was also part of New York City Council. And New York City Council would be a great gateway for that because they're part of legislation, right? They create enact policies that really don't make sense, but they do. So I think that it's a gateway for him. But again, I think it's a misuse of this administration as we see in most of this administration. And this administration finds their way to benefit from private contracts. And this is a private contract. Going out there and having speeches, making money from it is substantial. It's a direct conflict, but no surprise with this administration. Just another epic fail on the New, New York City level. Unfortunately, but that's what we're dealt with. And so the people have to vote better. They have to get out there and they have to vote better.
I'm in full agreement, Eric. They love to appeal to low information voters, low information people. They don't want to be informed. They're just voting on, oh, he goes to the same church as me. He goes to the same bar as me. We're the same ethnicity. Uh, we're the same uh, race. No, you have to actually do your homework because that's why you have Jomani Williams as your public advocate right now in New York City. So two last questions. First one I'm gonna ask is what do you believe the future holds in New York City under Eric Adams? Will he resign? Will whatever's gonna happen there? And then of course, we saw President Trump was at McDonald's the other day. Kamala Harris still refuses to visit Asheville, North Carolina and doesn't know how to publicly speak apparently. What is your predictions for the presidential election? And what is also the predictions of New York City with Eric Adams? Will he resign or what do you think's gonna happen there?
Sure. Uh, these are great questions. So I think that uh, Eric Adams will not resign. I think that he's going to stay there as long as he can. I think that he's gonna have to be dragged out. Kathy Hochul, we know is not going to make that move. So we may have to depend on New York City Council. That's our last straw to actually get Eric Adams out. Because I do not believe he will resign and I think Kathy Hochul is completely timid from that for the very reasons that we stated, the race card and also potentially having Andrew Cuomo as the next mayor of New York City. When it comes to Trump, I do believe that if, if the election is fair, which God willing it is, Trump will win by a landslide. But will the Democrats at this point concede? I don't know. It's looking pretty scary what's going on in the world. We are headed for a potential third world war, which could be an obstacle for Trump. And that may be the basis for, for Kamala Harris to say she cannot be removed from office at this time. So it's, we're in scary times. I do pray for Donald Trump's safety. I think there's uh, some real uh, secret assassination squads out there right now. His uh, his safety is completely in danger. So if we can keep him safe, he will buy, win by a landslide. That's my prediction.
Uh, I uh, I tend to uh, believe what you're saying. I tend to lean that way. Uh, I'm actually upset that Kamala Harris has not rescinded her endorsement from the alleged sexual assaultor Eric Adams. Uh, she's all for women. She's all for abortions, yet Eric Adams is in a sexual assault lawsuit using the same law they used against Donald Trump, yet he's paying, well, I'm sorry, the city is paying for his lawyers in that case. She hasn't rescinded his vote, his uh, endorsement. So Eric, uh, what's your uh, X handle? Where can we find you on uh, your podcast? Where can we see it? Tell the folks in my audience uh, where they can find that.
Uh, thank you so much, brother. I appreciate it. Check me out at Eric Tim Cop. It's E R I C D Y M Cop. I'm on X. I'm also on Instagram. Please check it out. And the podcast is New York's Finest Retired and Unfiltered. That's New York's Finest Retired and Unfiltered Podcast. We're also known as the Finest Unfiltered hashtag all over social media. Please check us out. Uh, myself and John McCary, both retired tenants from the NYPD. And of course, our brother here, Sal Greco, uh, he's got the Sal Greco Show and these uh, these topics intertwined. We discuss a lot of stuff. So check us out. Thank you so much, brother. I appreciate it. Thanks for what you're doing out there in Florida. Stay safe. And I'm glad to see that you're the wild card this time doing the podcast from your car.
Yeah, I learn from the best, right, Eric? This was your gig. You did it from the, you've done your show from the RV. You've done it from, I think, a restaurant one time. I saw you do it in a, in a, in a room, I don't know, bedroom somewhere. You've done it forever. You've done it from another country. I, I haven't got that one down yet, but I, I learned from the best, Eric.
And uh, I really. I actually dressed up a bathroom. I did it from a bathroom and tried to close everything up. Listen, that's, that was uh, you know, my life traveling. So I, it's actually pretty funny. So I've done it from Brazil. I've done it from Thailand, Malaysia, Bali. I've done it from a cruise ship. So that's been my life traveling retirement. I want to thank you for, for giving this opportunity to speak and um, you know, check us out, everybody. This is just uh, I was given our perspective. And uh, we want a better version of New York City. We really do. And even though I don't live in New York City anymore, I want a better, better version of New York City. My pension's from New York City. So it's, it's, it's important.
That's right. We want corruption out. We want the corrupted leaders out. We want everything to be run the way it should. Uh, and with that being said, I'm gonna actually end the show on that note. So if you like what you saw, if you like what you heard, if you're on YouTube, hit the subscribe button, hit the notification button, hit the follow button, share it out to people on Rumble. Hit the rumble button, hit the follow button. If you're on Apple, Spotify, Apple Podcasts, all those platform, uh, podcast streaming platforms, give it a listen, give it a like, start following it there if you want to listen to the, to the show. And with that being said, is this has been Sal Greco. By the way, I want to mention that Cal Bakery is the place to be if you're in Florida at all. Hopefully uh, Cal Bakery one day will come on to the show next as a guest, uh, the owners of Cal. I'm out here in Tampa. They have two locations, but the new one that's coming, I don't have a grand opening yet. It's in 17519 Bruce B Downs Boulevard in Tampa. Go check it out. Go look, go, go ask Alan. Alan's the boss over there. He'll make you one of these cuffecitos. It's unbelievable stuff. This is what I drink every morning. There's 16 locations in Florida. Make sure you hit Cal Bakery. Guys, I love you all. Thanks for the support. I love, I love even the haters. I see who you are. Uh, but I don't really pay attention to you guys because you really don't know what you're saying. With that being said, thank you. Thank you, Eric, for coming on. I will be listening to the Retired Unfiltered uh, podcast tomorrow. The next day after that, folks, please watch the show. It's very informative. They teach you, they actually, not even teach you, they're, they're trying to warn New York City and everybody there. Don't let your town become the next New York City. Thank you all. Good morning, good afternoon and good night.